Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. For that, our friend, Pastor Dennis Hudson.
Thank you all so much for the privilege of being here. Let's pray. Father, we do come this evening, first of all, grateful for the life you give us, grateful for the opportunity to govern ourselves. Lord, we're also grateful for the privilege of calling on you for wisdom and strength, for blessings, for leadership. Lord, all these things are great gifts from you. Lord, we thank you for the rain that came without storms. We look forward to many more blessings. And, Lord, this evening, we look forward to you being in our presence in this meeting, sharing your wisdom through the leaders that are here, and accomplishing tasks that are important to all of us. We praise you for your grace and mercy. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you.
Item number three is audience participation. That is covered on the screen. If there is an item on the agenda which you wish to speak on, please see the city secretary, and you're allowed to speak on any item that is listed on the agenda. Item number four is consent agenda. I have had a request to pull item B and D. So, we will look at item A, action regarding minutes of April 19th, and C, action regarding release of public utility easement in the square development. Any questions on A and C? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve action A and C on the consent agenda as presented.
Charles Secretary. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, a full house this evening. Thanks for coming, y'all. Item B, action regarding authorization of industrial project order with Kim Lee Horn Associates for sanitary sewer rehab phase two. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of an extension or rehab of a water line. This particular water line, I guess the last phase extended across the boulevard into the mill area. We have an existing sanitary sewer that actually is located, we think, under one of the mills. So, the purpose of this alignment and project is to get that out from under the mills into a new alignment. And we've been lucky. We haven't had any breaks or issues with that line, but we have elected to go ahead and do that because if we did have some sort of failure or bypass pumping, which would be a traditional way of dealing with a busted line or a failed sewer, would be almost impossible. So, it's kind of a critical need. But although, again, we haven't had the issues, so I'd be glad to answer any questions that you got.
Council questions for Rick.
I was reading through all the information that was provided to us. One of the statements in here that raised a question is, it is anticipated that a BNSF railroad permit will be required to bore under the tracks. Do we anticipate any setbacks in the schedule because of that permit? And approximately, what does that permit cost? And I know when we were building the bridge, we kept having to have new permits and...
Well, the bridge was a different situation in that, I mean, the At Gray Crossing covered the bridge. So, the At Gray Crossing agreement has a lot more liability on the part of the railroad. So, that license, if you will, license agreement to cross a railroad, it probably has more expense associated with it. This is just a typical railroad license agreement, underground installation. It's, you know, I hesitate to give a price, but, I mean, less than $10,000, less than $5,000 probably.
Okay. Is that rolled into this?
You know, I don't think that it'll, I mean, clearly, this project has been on the books for several years. So, it should be, you know, within the first year of design to have that permit in hand.
Is that expense covered in this bid or this estimate?
The actual expense of the railroad agreement is not. So, this is just coordinating with the railroad, preparing the instrument and necessary agreement.
So, we're looking like another possibly $5,000 to $10,000 above what you said.
Which would be covered. Again, this has been funded by ARPA funds, and so I suspect that construction at some point will likely be funded by those same funds along with the license agreement for the railroad crossing.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on 4B?
Yeah, I got one here. How long is...
I'm sorry. There's just one question for now.
You start charging for other questions?
It's my last meeting. I could be a little bit cocky. Sorry, council member.
So, how long has those pipes been in the ground?
I'm not sure how long they've been in the ground. Maybe Randy can answer that. Probably 50s. I mean, you know, 40, 50 year life is typical.
That's what I was going to say. It's about a 50, 40, 50 year life.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're there.
We're there. Yeah, we're on borrowed time, really. So, and again, I think the fact that it probably goes under one of the silos, which, you know, when they were built. So, I mean, that gives you some indication of how long that line's been there. I mean, they didn't bore it. It was after the fact.
Appreciate it.
Anything else on B? Let's go to D as well. We'll do them both at the same time. D is action regarding approval of recommendation from advisory and recreation parks board to purchase 12 days of Christmas display. Back to Rick Trice, one more time.
I think, you know, this is an annual item that we bring before you. The park board, along with the beautification committee, selects displays, Christmas displays, that we install. Of course, we try to beat a certain deadline to get a discounted price. This particular display is a little bit different from the ones in the past. In the past, we focused on Willow Creek Park. This one will be on the east side of the boulevard. So, it'll be really along Basswood Boulevard. So, give them some love, so.
Questions on D? Can you?
A couple meetings ago, there was some discussion about the condition of some of the playground equipment, and that was going to be a pretty big expense to repair as well, the slides over at Highland Station Park. And I was just wondering, is this something really smart for us to do? And maybe the parks board can answer this better. At this time, should we be focusing on Christmas decorations that's only going to be available for a month as compared to repairing some of our playground equipment?
Actually, council member, we're in the process of getting estimates to replace that particular piece of playground equipment in Highland Station Park. We've also have an IPO working with Kim Lee Horn to do an evaluation and survey of all the equipment in all of our parks, just a condition assessment and replacement value sort of assessment. So, we will be returning, Randy will be returning with the proposals to go ahead and replace that equipment. And that'll be something that we'll be bringing forward, I think, on an annual basis also, to systematically look at some of our equipment that's in poorer condition for replacement.
Okay. Thank you.
See, it doesn't necessarily need to be an either-or situation. I think we can do both.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
But we don't all know what the budget is that they have. So, that's why I was asking.
Other questions on D? For D?
Yeah, D, I definitely agree. We would like to feel the love on that side of Saginaw. So, I was actually kind of happy to see this. That's the area I live in and...
We did it specifically for you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. That's what I thought.
That's all right. That's two in one meeting.
You've been saving those up, haven't you?
Yeah, I'm getting 12.
Yeah, they're getting 12 items all at once. We only get one or two on this side of the town.
Yeah, I was very happy to see it. I think it'll be, I think it'll really be nice, and the citizens on that side of Saginaw will appreciate it.
We agree.
Anything else on D? If not, we'll entertain an action, a motion for B and D.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept items 4B and 4D as presented.
Thank you, Senator. Valerie, say. All those in favor raise their right hand. Excellent. Thank you all. So, with that, I was going to say, this is the last city council meeting for the esteemed Rick Trice, Director of Public Works. So, we had a nice reception this afternoon for him. I heard it went well. We will miss you, Rick. I know you won't miss us, but we will miss you in these night meetings. So, in that vein, we'll try to get you out by midnight tonight. So, that's the plan.
I appreciate that. It's out of my business. It's gone. I may just walk out the door, but...
You know, we couldn't stop you.
Hey, you know what? It's been wonderful. You know, I've had a good four and a half years here, and it's been a blessing. I've learned a lot. You know, I had 33 years in Fort Worth, and I thought I knew a lot, but when I got here, I did things that I never did in Fort Worth. So, I expanded my horizon, my knowledge, and I appreciate that. I'm not going to miss the night meetings. So, this is several that I attend. So, anyway, I appreciate your comments, Mayor.
No, thank you. We'll miss you, Rick. Thank you for everything. Item number five, proclamation, Public Service Recognition Week. I think Pedro is going to have something to say about that?
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've been up here. Last time I here was much shorter. So, the proclamation you're about to read is First Public Service Recognition Week. It is celebrated the first full week in May since 1985, and it recognizes those individuals who serve our nation at the federal, state, county, and local level. Those are the employees, and we have some in the room. As you can tell, I'm surrounded by them. So, we just want to recognize the service that they do for the public, and that's what the proclamation you're about to read. So, thank you.
Then I will read the proclamation in full. So, City Saginaw Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation, state, and city working. Whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and city employees, risk their lives each day in service of the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas public servants, including teachers, doctors, nurses, scientists, building inspectors, social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, I, Todd Flipple, Mayor of the City Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th as Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize and honor the men and women who serve our nation at federal, state, county, and local government employees. When it's where I do hereby set my sand and cause the seal, the City Saginaw do fix of this the third day of May 2022. Well, thank you all. Congratulations, folks. Hear, hear. Yeah. Pedro, are we doing pictures? Who can we get up here to be pictures with? I was going to say, I think Lieutenant Krippen should come up here. I would like to get Lieutenant Krippen up here as well in the picture, so.
Just get all the public workers up here. I think they all should. Come on, Randy. Come on, Larry.
Randy's going to have to take off that hat.
Item number six, presentation regarding industrial pretreatment program. Matt Reagan, Environmental's Manager. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. For those that have not already met, my name is Matt Reagan. I'm the environmental manager for this great city of ours. Tonight, I'll be discussing with you the city's industrial pretreatment program. Maybe.
It's a trick. You've got to figure it out.
This is the City of Fort Worth wastewater treatment facility. It's for Village Creek. And as you can see, it's not a simple operation at all. It's definitely not something that the city would be able to handle on our own. So, Saginaw, we contract City of Fort Worth for wastewater pretreatment. Federal regulations require wastewater treatment plants that release over 5 million gallons of wastewater per day to implement an industrial pretreatment program. And because of this, we have an industrial pretreatment program. Saginaw has four points of connection to the City of Fort Worth where they meter our flow. Those points are the north, the east, the southeast, southwest metering stations. Fort Worth samples each of these metering stations for strength and charges the, charges the city based on our flow through those metering stations, as well as for BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand, and TSS, which is total suspended solids. Sorry. Represented in this graph is the average monthly flow for 2021. The east metering station has the highest volume and collects wastewater from some residential and most of our industries, as well as commercial along Saginaw Boulevard corridor from the furthest north to include Bailey Boswell down to Palomino Drive. The remaining metering stations collect mostly residential with a small percentage of commercial. All of our permitted industries discharge through our east metering station. So, how do we determine what industries need to be permitted? Industries that have specialized waste, industries that have specialized waste, a high discharge volume of 25,000 gallons per day or greater, or are historically noncompliant or discharging outside of our standard discharge limits. An example of noncompliance could be chronic pH violations, violating city ordinances, or discharging waste without city knowledge. Industrial surveys are sent out periodically based on operations at the facilities. We also partner with the building department and use plan review in the CO application process to identify new businesses as well. Inspections of facilities whose operations may adversely affect our system are done based off of surveys or annual fire department inspections. Currently, the industries that are permitted in Saginaw include Banner Box, CTI Foods, which includes both CTI Arlington and CTI Saginaw plants, DOS Project, Spur Transit, and Ventura Foods. In this chart, we can see the amount of water usage versus discharge that's being utilized by the main industries in Saginaw. We can see that food industries are by far the highest discharge industries. Here, I've also listed the average water bill for each industry. Altogether, we receive just under $117,000 every month from these industries. Just for reference, the impact of the industries in Saginaw, just for reference, the impact of the industries in Saginaw, mainly CTI Saginaw, which is the bean plant, and CTI Arlington, which is their soup plant, are the top water users in the city, followed by DOS Project, Ventura Foods, and then all of the Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD facilities come in number five. So, how does the, how does City Saginaw offset our cost for administering the program? Each industry pays for its own sampling, for own cost of sampling, which occurs twice a year for their permit conditions. We also sample three times a year for strength, twice during their permit sampling, and then once for BOD and TSS only. Each industry pays for their discharge, which is calculated based off of their flow and strength, and there is also a fee for their program administration. This chart shows the recovery costs from the pretreatment program as well as offset from the cost of sewage treatment. CTI Foods pays the highest surcharge percentage of all the industries, and therefore is responsible for a good portion of our income. Individually, they're 14% and 29%, but together, they encompass 43% of all surcharges that we receive every month. And we total $128,000, a little over $128,000 every month, just from our permitted industries. So, as our city continues to grow, so will the demand on our infrastructure. So, we must stay ahead with new ideas, which is strive to be proactive and forward-thinking by looking to technology. We can collect and implement new processes and generate additional revenue or reduce costs. So, looking ahead, one example of innovation is to install manhole sensors that will collect data and monitor flow. They'll also send us notifications for potential problems. Another example is to install specialized sensors that will allow us to proactively monitor for sewer gases, which have been a source of complaints about smells. They've also been an issue that's come up with our employees being able to enter the manholes safely without scum into H2S gases. Thank you for your time. And are there any questions?
Any questions for Matt?
I got a couple.
Okay.
What's our percent of fail rate when y'all go test with these companies? How often do we see violations?
There was recently the first discharge violation that was on April 10th, and that was the first one in, I would say, probably at least three years, maybe four.
So, we don't have any industries in that are habitual violations or probable?
No. No, that's not to say that it wasn't that way in the past. But I would say, over the last six years, my department has worked with the industries very closely to try to maintain a good working relationship and an understanding as to what the city looks to accomplish.
Next question I got is, how do y'all go about, how often do y'all test the backflow preventers?
Backflow preventers as a whole or by...
Yeah, just what's our policy?
Policy is for non-residential, for all residential or any non-residential irrigation system to be required to be tested every year. So, once a year. Anything that's a double check is required to be tested annually. Anything that's an RP or reduced pressure, backflow assembly is required to be tested every six months. We did do an exemption for irrigation systems that have RP's installed. We've allowed them to go to just annual testing for those.
Okay. And how often do we see failures?
I would have to look at the numbers, but I would say we get very few based off of how many we're sending out and how many are being tested. We're talking like a percent or less than a percent. I mean, it's not very common.
Good, good. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Matt?
No, but I want to tell him thank you. Because he goes down to the bean plant every time I call. Him and Randy.
The bean plant is a popular one. Yeah, definitely. We all get notes about that.
I have a question. So, have you put a cost to those manhole cover, that manhole cover technology?
Yes. There's a, I've sent some information through Randy. I'm not sure if he's going to be presenting it soon, but they're in the neighborhood of about 4,000 to 5,000 for each one. The higher cost to start, to get that equipment, would benefit because if we're able to reduce or eliminate sanitary sewer overflows by using this monitoring equipment, it would save probably about $1,000 each time that there's an overflow. So, it really wouldn't take but a few every year, and we would start making our money back off of these. And it's more than just a monitor. It allows us to do trending, and there's a whole other presentation I've done for that one, but it takes about 45 minutes.
So, the other question is regarding the Arlington and Saginaw. How is, how are we, how's that Arlington factory on our side? Or how does that work?
The history, it's a soup plant, is what it is. CTI Foods actually used to be called Southwest Supes, and their main plant was located in Arlington. And so, when their bean facility moved into Saginaw, they decided to buy enough property to actually have a second facility. Then they decided to open up their soup plant in Saginaw. And so, they weren't sure what to call it, and so they just said CTI Arlington.
Oh, okay. Okay.
There's not anything other than it was just lack of imagination, I think.
I thought it was in Arlington. I was kind of confused.
No, it, yeah, it actually, the operation was in Arlington. It was off of Great Southwest Parkway, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Sidney?
Could we get a copy of your presentation, please?
Yeah, I've got a paper copy, or I believe Janice can email it out. I can email it, whichever.
Some of those numbers were kind of hard to read from here. I'd be curious to take a closer look at it.
I tried to make it as big as possible, but, you know, sometimes...
Some of us are old.
I wear glasses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number seven, Senator's action regarding approval of resolution 2022-12, adopting revision of the City of Saginaw Personnel Policies and approving the Personnel Policy Manual as revised. For that, Assistant City Manager Lee Howell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is asking for your consideration and adoption of the attached resolution and the approval of the revision to the policy manual, which amounts to the addition of what we're calling the Clean Fleet Policy. So, there's a lot to this. I'll open it up for questions here in just a moment. Just briefly, basically, what this is doing is it's an acknowledgement of something that's been in effect for about 10 counties in the metroplex now for a number of years. And that is an EPA designation that says that the DFW metroplex is under a classification of what they call a non-attainment or marginal non-attainment ozone pollution level. That's, doesn't take an engineering degree to understand what that means. We're in an area where there's a lot of pollution due to emissions. So, they have suggested for a number of years, and at least 42 other cities have adopted this resolution and Clean Fleet Policy in the metroplex area. And what has happened recently that sparked me bringing this to you is, you probably have heard of the, what's been called as the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which was passed by the Congress a few months back, that has, is going to channel a lot of money into the entire United States, but into our area as well in the form of grants that are administered by the North Central Texas COG. So, for instance, the first one of those that came up is a grant that would pay for, a 100% reimbursement grant for, to pay for the City of Saginaw, as well as any other city that applies for it, for the installation and construction of EV charging stations. So, that's probably the first of many transportation-related grants that will be open to us to apply for. And all of those are going to require, as a precondition of those grants, the adoption of this resolution and the addition of this Clean Fleet Policy into our personnel policies by the city. So, we're asking for you to consider adopting those or in approving those so that we are, that we have that condition of the application already in place. Most of these grants are announced and give a 30-day window to apply for. Most of these grants are announced and give a 30-day window to apply for and get approved for. So, if we have this already done, that's one less thing that we have to, to do. The, the grant for, for that particular, or the, the grant application is 38 pages long and has to be submitted within that 30 days, and it requires a lot of background work, which is typical of all these grants that'll be coming. So, some of the other future grants could supply some additional incentives to, for both the city and citizens to move toward not only electric vehicles, but just low-emission traditional fossil fuel vehicles. And so we're, we're just trying to position ourselves to be ready to apply for any of those. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Questions for the Assistant City Manager?
Yeah, I got a couple. Definitely a lot of the cities around here are installing these recharging systems. And I know some of them actually take credit cards too, so you know, it could actually, I don't know what the rule is if they pay for it, and then we also have where they use a credit card, it could actually become a positive cash flow for the city to, to do these.
Yes, sir. We, we could, we could install those on our own. This particular grant that we looked at right now requires the, a no-charge.
A no-charge.
Availability to the citizens. So, if in fact the city bought an EV or, or multiple EVs, we could use it also, but also citizens would have access to it free of charge.
Yeah, that's what I'd be really interested in is have, having these installed where the citizens could use them. None personally, but more so than, than just the city alone. I know a lot of people's buying more and more of these Tesla Model 3s and stuff. They're looking for places to charge them. Could be, definitely something worth looking into.
Yes.
The, the only thing that, and I, I think I sent an email on this, on this is, we have to be very sturdish of the new technology. I know Ford's just come out with an all F-150, I think, all-electric, you know? You know, I tend not to jump on the bandwagon on those right off the bat. A lot of modern technology, gonna be a lot of bugs, lot of software.
That's correct.
Yeah, but definitely this is good. I, I think we ought to at least look into, maybe do as to how many people do we have around here that has EV cars and, and what benefit would this bring to our citizens?
Yeah, that's one of the things, i- if in fact we were granted a reimbursement for any kind of installation of charging stations, one of the things is an annual reporting requirement. So we would have some data on that. And there's annual reporting data going back about 11 years or 11 or 12 years that's available on the NCT COG website that I attached to, a portion of that with your backup material that shows a significant difference in, in the pollution ratings that, over the course of those years.
And from my understanding from this, this isn't we're going to go wrong, but it's just putting one thing in place to where if we decide to go after this, this funding, that this is something we wouldn't have to do upfront. It's already done and it kind of put our wind at the back, so to say.
That's correct. It's just a stipulation of the grant and probably a number of grants that will follow this in, in the transportation realm. And so, yeah, we would have to, we would do some significant assessment of what type of vehicle and what's available out there before I'm sure we'd go out and just start buying EVs.
Have, have we done any assessment on where we think an EV would go in the city? Would, would we put it in and, so, so I think me and you Gabe talked a little bit back before it's about maybe over by the library or anything like that?
Yeah, well, that's, if we were able to obtain this grant, the, the new library senior center construction would be an optimal place to install some of them, just because it's a new construction from the ground up. Any other locations on city property would more than likely, there, there's a few that wouldn't require a, a large construction, but many, you know, you'd be talking about concrete or asphalt cuts and replacement like that, so a much higher construction cost to put it in, in existing buildings. But that one being from the ground up would, lends itself to a leaner installation.
Appreciate it.
Other questions for Lee?
Are you looking at any other grants down the road or?
We will be. There, we're anticipating a series of them that'll be tied to that federal bill that will be pushed through the COG.
Thank you.
Other questions? It's Mayor.
And I just think it's interesting to see how this new federal government bill that passed, how it actually filters down into the city and how quickly this is being addressed. So I think it's a good lesson for all of us in civics.
Other questions? Cindy?
So does this apply only to the charging systems or do we have other alternate fuel type stations, perhaps natural gas? Would this also fit in with this?
It, it could potentially in the future. This, the particular grant that, like I say, that we looked at that initiated this tonight is only for two specific types of EV charging stations. But like I say, there's, and I haven't read through the however many thousands of pages there are in that infrastructure bill, but just from, from a preliminary review of it, there's, there's a number of different potential grant opportunities that will be forthcoming in the next couple of years.
I wasn't particularly talking about grants, but I was just talking about general things to help, you know, minimize the emissions that we have in the air.
Oh, well, yes. I mean, if we were to try to convert to something else like that, you know, really essentially, and I put in the backup material that every year when we go through fleet addition or replacement criteria to, to decide what types of vehicles to purchase, we essentially work toward attainment of this grant, or the, I'm sorry, of this policy by trying to pick the most fuel-efficient, the most low-emission vehicles that are available that we can afford to buy, so.
And the other question I have, is there a minimum amount of progress that we need to show and report every year to maintain compliance with this? And what happens if we don't meet those minimum requirements?
There's no minimum for, for a city to apply for. It's, it's, it's a target just to try to attain.
Okay.
Counsel, other questions? No, I'm glad we're looking at this. I think it's, it's definitely where the future is heading, and I, I was interested to see the highlights that other cities have done and other municipalities and school districts have done. So it's a lot of options out there as well. And Cindy brings up a good point that it's not, potentially not just EV, but biofuels and other options. So there are things out there, but I'm glad we're looking at it. Like this is a step forward for us, definitely. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution 2022-12, adopting resolution for the City of Saginaw Personnel Policy.
Charles, second. Although in favor, raise your right hand. Although opposed? Excellent, thank you guys. Thank you, Lee. Moving forward to item number eight, fiscal year 2022-23, budget workshop. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This presentation tonight is mostly a refresher of just the overall budget, the funds and the tax rate and the terminology that we use around the tax rate. So for most of you, it's, it's a refresher. As if, as I'm going, if you have questions, please let me know, but I won't spend too much time on it since I think most of y'all have seen this pretty much at least one time. So we talk about.
I know, I got one too. I got one too.
There we go. So we talk about the budget, as if it's one budget, but really, as y'all know by now, there are multiple budgets within the budget that y'all approve. And those are different funds, so we have a budget for each fund. And the reason that we do that is we, for legal requirements as well as generally accounting, generally accepted accounting principles is that certain revenues are designated for certain purposes, and so those are generally why they're grouped into different funds. The first two we'll touch on tonight because those are funded all or partially by property tax, and that's the topic mostly for tonight. The other funds we'll get into as we just have more details and discuss the other funds in the future workshops. This next slide just gives you an idea of the proportion of each of the different funds that comprise the total budget. As you can see, the general fund is about a third of the total budget. The capital projects fund is where we pay for all of these construction projects where the funds, where we receive our bond funds or COs usually, and where the expenses for the big projects are like the fire station, Bailey Boswell Bridge, the library, senior center. So that fluctuates from year to year more than the other funds, but this current year it's about 35% of the total budget. The enterprise fund, about 20%, that's our water and wastewater expenditure and revenues. And then the debt service fund there is 7%. So the debt service fund is where we pay for our debt, the principal and interest on the bonds that we owe. So, now to the tax rate. Our property taxes is a source of our revenue, and the way that we come up with that total is the base times the rate. So the tax base is the value of the property within the City of Saginaw, and that is valued by Tarrant Appraisal District, TAD is what we call it. And so that's a piece of it. The other piece of it is the tax rate, and that's determined by the City Council. So when you multiply whatever rate y'all come up with, we come up with as part of our budget times the base, and that's how we generate, that's how we come up with the total tax revenue. In this current year, this just gives you an idea of the total of the tax rate and how it's broken down. So just like we have pieces of the budget, we also have two different pieces of the tax rate. There's a portion called for maintenance and operation, we abbreviate it with, is called MNO, and that's the portion that goes to the general fund. That's the part that pays for the general services, police, fire, public works, library, administration, those services. And then the other piece of it, the INS rate, interest and sinking, is the part that goes to the, to the debt service fund to pay off our debt, the principal and interest on our bonds. So we had, so in our current tax rate, it's about 60% of the tax rate go, or tax revenue go for general fund, about 40% towards debt. The tax rate terminology, we're going to go through each of these individually. There are multiple tax rates that we are required to calculate by law. All of these tax rates are reported to y'all. If you remember last summer and all the summers before that, you vote on a proposed rate. The rate has to be advertised in the paper on the website, and then for these last few years, there's another requirement that there is a website with, operated by Tarrant Appraisal District, but each appraisal district, and that's where citizens can go, property owners can go and take a look at what their total tax rate will be. So all of the entities put in the information and they can see their total bill and not just one portion of it, not just the school or the city or the county, they'll see everything. So we're going to go and talk about each of these tax rates. The no new debt revenue tax rate is basically like the starting point, the tax rate that we calculate. And that no new revenue tax rate is basically the rate that generates the same amount of revenue as last year on the same properties. And then you add on to that the amount that's required for debt service, the amount that's required to pay off our bonds, our principal and interest. So again, like I was saying before, the tax revenue equals the base times the rate. So if your base is increasing as it has in the past few years, your no new revenue tax rate is going to go down. It's an inverse relationship, right? If you're trying to get the same amount of money and the base is going up, the rate's going to have to go down. And it hasn't happened for quite a few years now, but vice versa, right? If the, if the tax base was decreasing, then the rate would need to go up to collect the same amount of revenue. The next tax, tax rate that we calculate and advertise every year is the voter approval rate. And that is basically the no new revenue tax rate plus three and a half percent on the operating side. And then again, you add on the, the rate that's required to pay for your debt service, to pay off the principal and, and the interest. At any rate that is adopted over the voter approval rate will trigger an automatic election. Now, there are a few exceptions to that, and that's what the next one is. The next slide is. One of the exceptions is the de minimis tax rate, and the City of Saginaw is eligible to use the de minimis tax rate because we, our population is under 30,000. So cities under 30,000 have this option. And the de minimis tax rate is basically the no new revenue tax rate, so the same amount, the rate that gets us the same amount as last year, plus whatever rate will generate an additional $500,000 for operations, and then again, plus the amount that's required for debt service. If we adopt this rate, then we have to use an accelerated schedule. And if you recall, last year, we were planning on, on adopting the de minimis rate or close to the de minimis rate, and that's why we adopted the budget and the tax rate in August versus September. It's an accelerated schedule that's required to use this rate. Now, we ended up not having to use the de minimis rate for many reasons, but, so the tax rate is, this is the general calculation of the tax rate, but every year, the State Comptroller's Office changes the way we calculate. It tweaks it here and there, and especially these last few years after Senate Bill 2 passed, we're not 100% certain each year. So throughout the summer, we get values from TAD, they are certified in July, and those are the values that we use for the official tax rate calculation. And then in addition to that, we have the rules or the calculation that's provided by the State Comptrollers, and those can change from year to year. For the most part, we have a good idea of what they're going to be, but we never know until we get them. Sometimes, like last year, we didn't get the actual calculation worksheet until after we got our certified values. So, it's always a little up in the air, but we do our best throughout the summer to make estimates based on what we know at the time. The last piece of terminology that we're going to talk about is the unused incremental rate. So, when the state changed the voter approval tax rate from the 8% to 3.5%, they didn't want cities to automatically just adopt 3.5% every year. So what they did as an incentive was they said, okay, So what they did as an incentive was they said, okay, you can save the difference between the voter approval tax rate and what you adopt, and the difference you can use for up to three years after that. So as, in my example here, it's just a quick example of how, like in 2020, if the, if you, your voter approval tax rate was fifty cents and you adopted fifty cents, there's no difference there. But the next year, if your tax rate was fifty cents and a quarter, and you only used fifty cents, you could carry forward a quarter and use that for three years. And then in the example, the 2022, if you had, if your voter approval tax rate was fifty-one cents and you only used fifty, you'd have a cent that next year. So if you accumulate that over the three years, you could use in 2023, an additional one and a quarter cent. So that's just a, a simple example, but what I was going to explain for the city of Saginaw is this next year, we have some capacity there. In 2020, we had just a little under a cent that we didn't use, and then in 2021, we had two cents that we didn't use. And the reason that we didn't need to use the de minimis tax rate, and that we have this capacity this year, is because if you recall during the pandemic, we elected to use, to calculate at an eight percent. It was a one-time exception to the rule. So we have that capacity right now, but I'm saying that with some caution, because as I just mentioned, the state comptroller changes the worksheets every year, and they could take that away. I mean, right now, based on the rules, this is what we have as far as our unused incremental tax rate that could be used for the 2023 tax rate. So that's all I had, just as a refresher on the tax rate. Any questions? We'll talk about an exemption that Councilmember Junkersfeld wanted some information on.
Any questions on what Kim has presented so far? Yes, Mayor?
One of the very first slides showed how much of the budget is used for different uses.
Uh huh.
In our...
The pie chart?
Yeah, the debt portion to pay off our debt. I think it was like seven percent, or what was it? I'm, I'm not seeing it here. The debt portion of the overall, yeah.
So the pie chart I think you're talking about showed the total budget, and then the funds, and then it just showed a percentage of the total budget, so the general fund was about thirty percent of the total budget?
Right. And I noticed that the debt service fund, I believe it was seven percent, and
Right.
Not being knowledgeable about city budgets particularly, that sounds very reasonable, and it sounds pretty low. Am I right about that? I know all cities vary, and it could even vary from year to year.
They do.
But it sounds like something that we should be proud of, that our entire budget, you know, that we don't have some very large percentage that we have to pay for debt.
Every year, we compare our tax rate, and we are on the low end. I would say the amount that a city spends overall in debt has a lot to do with where they are in the maturity of the city. So when a city is starting and building a lot of infrastructure, they may have more than a city that's more established and more in a maintenance mode.
Okay, I just thought that was kind of a good news aspect of the budget.
Council, other questions for Kim?
It's not the most exciting topic.
No, it's good, it's good.
But...
I do like to get...
It's necessary for you all to understand, because like I said, you all are the ones setting the, the tax rate.
I do like to do my, my annual tax speech, because everybody likes to talk about taxes. Your tax bill, this is your property tax bill, is made up of more than just the city of Saginaw. Does anybody know what the total tax bill, what your percentage of that tax bill is from the city of Saginaw? I think I know the answer, but Kim will correct me if I'm wrong. So your total tax bill, let's say it's a hundred bucks, how much of that hundred dollars goes to the city of Saginaw? Anybody know? I think it's eighteen. Is it eighteen, Kim?
Yeah, I, I use, I usually say about twenty percent.
Okay, twenty percent.
It's actually a little less than twenty percent.
So twenty dollars out of every hundred goes to the city of Saginaw. The rest goes to the, the school district, the Tarrant County, Tarrant County College, and the medical district, right?
Hospital district. That's right. So those three pieces of the county are about another twenty percent.
Okay.
And then the schools' taxes are about sixty percent.
Yeah, so, so just keep, keep, right, so keep that in mind. When you complain about your tax bill, which people do, just understand how it's broken down. It's not just us, it's, it's a bigger picture, so. So Kim talked about just how the city calculates, and Kim does a great job, and I appreciate it because she keeps us sane, and also explains this to us. So if you have any questions on taxes, don't ask me, ask Kim, because she's a lot smarter than we are. Absolutely. Any other questions on this?
Call the school district.
Well, yeah. All right, any other questions on this before we go to the exemptions, Council? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This is a good opportunity. I would like to claim credit for this phrase, but it's yours. You say, compared to our neighbors in Fort Worth, you get twice the service in Saginaw at half the tax rate. So, as you know, our city limits is, in some instances in neighborhoods, one side of the street is Saginaw, and one side is Fort Worth. So for those listening or in the audience, the Fort Worth, the city portion of your tax rate is approximately seventy-four cents. You know, ours is forty-seven and change, so we're proud of that, and that speaks to the, the, the good judgment over many years from the, the council, and previous councils, current council.
Thank you, good point. Before we get mad when I say that, so I'm trying to say too much, but it is true. So Kim, go ahead.
Okay, so property tax exemptions. We currently, currently, the city currently offers two. Homestead exemption for folks over sixty-five is fifty thousand, and then disabled is thirty thousand. So I have an example of how the exemption works, and that is there, the, so say you have a property valued at two hundred thousand dollars. You'll, if you are a senior over sixty-five, then you reduce your value by fifty thousand. That leaves a taxable value of a hundred and fifty, and that's the value that you apply the tax rate to. So in this example, the property tax would be a savings of two hundred and thirty, about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, based on the fifty thousand exemption. If we were contemplating increasing that, I just used an estimate, and what I did was I said, okay, the last five years residential values have increased forty percent. That's a lot. So if we increased our exemption of fifty thousand by forty percent, that would be a total of seventy thousand, or an additional twenty thousand dollars. So if you were contemplating that, that would save, that would be a savings of an additional not, about ninety-six dollars, ninety-five dollars and ninety cents, to be exact, and it would cost other taxpayers a little over twelve dollars, right? So if you're giving one group of people an exemption, it's going to come from somebody else. So the ones that aren't getting the exemption, their tax bill would go up about twelve dollars. I would say...
Twelve dollars a year or a month?
A year.
Can they get both of those homestead exemptions at once?
Uh, yes.
And they can?
If you were disabled and over sixty-five. Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea how many homestead over sixty-five we have in the city?
I do.
Of course she does.
Well, not off the top of my head. We have about fourteen hundred.
One more.
And about a hundred and fifty disabled.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we know, I mean, because a lot of senior citizens, people over sixty-five, fixed income, do we, do we have a general ideal of our senior citizens, what their fixed income is?
It's probably around fifteen hundred a month.
Because that's what social security is roughly?
Yeah, that's what my mom is, yeah. A lot of seniors can't make it on that amount of money, and then when they have the tax too, they, it puts a big burden on them. And I don't know that the younger people would mind paying twelve dollars a, a year to help out the seniors. And one of these days, they're going to be a senior, and they're going to need it, you know, so.
I would mention, if this is something that you're contemplating, we will, you would have to make that change before the budget motions. So the Tarrant Appraisal District would need that bef, before July first, in order to get the numbers that we'll need to calculate the tax rate, and to make sure that the exemptions are attached to the properties. So when the tax bills goes out on October first, that those would be included.
Is this only a Tarrant County and School District tax exemption, or does this also include the city of Saginaw?
It would just be for the city of Saginaw.
Okay.
And it would only be that portion of the thing that applies, not the moose on the table, which is school?
No, that's correct.
So these numbers up here is just Saginaw?
That's correct.
Okay.
Did you say moose on the table?
Yes.
Okay, I've never heard that before, all right. Oh, Jesus.
He's a foreigner, okay.
I learned something new, okay. All right, other questions?
I would definitely be, would, would like to maybe some numbers on this and look at, I mean, right now, we're doing a hard number of fifty thousand. Could we do a percentage maybe? I don't know. Senior, how do we help our senior citizens? I mean, I can tell you, unfortunately for me, I'm still a gangster and a lawyer, I've got a lot to do more years after work, but I, I really feel for our senior citizens. You know, they worked hard all their life, they, you know, they took their turn at the cloud, and we need to help them as much as we can.
They took their turn at what?
It's a country thing. It's kind of like milk and the cows, and he's got long horns.
I understood the references. Thank you.
I've never seen a moose on the table.
Other questions, Council? Yes, so there's no action on this tonight, but we need to, to get some more information and consider this. So we'll consider this and maybe take action in the future. So Council, give your questions or thoughts to Kim and or Gabe, and we'll discuss a potential other, maybe the next or a couple council meetings.
So you need to know this by, before July the first, right?
I would say the la, yeah, the last meeting, the second meeting in June would be the latest that you could take action on this.
And we need to make our decision before the budget comes, okay. I just want to make sure I heard you.
So does any homestead exemption, exemptions, the, the, does the school board have any? I mean, does any, does the school board, does these homestead exemptions, is the school board?
These exemptions that we're just talking about would just be for the city portion. The school district and the county have their, have their own, or can choose to have their own.
Yeah, the school district has some exemptions for seniors.
Oh, they do have some.
I don't know the numbers, but they have something, yeah.
Yeah.
And I believe on the ballot Saturday is, is another, yeah, to increase.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct. Lots of money, lots of money.
All right, other, Cindy, go ahead.
Does this sixty-five and over, does this also freeze, or is it just every year as your tax, appraisal value of your home goes up, we'll still be deducting fifty thousand off? It's not a frozen, like it is with the county?
No, it's not frozen.
Okay.
This would be an amount, and this would get, but you would have flexibility. I mean, you have, you could change it as, yearly if you wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
There's, there's no, we can go back every year and readdress this, correct?
You could, yes, sir.
Could we raise that exemption for over sixty-five? The dollar amount?
Yes. Well...
You mean like the age?
You could raise the total, right, but you can't...
You mean the age or?
No, the dollar amount.
The dollar amount.
Yes, that's what we're talking about. So instead of, so the estimates that I gave you of saving them an additional ninety-six dollars would be if we raised the exemption from fifty thousand to seventy thousand. And again, these are just estimates.
Yeah, there is.
Again, I definitely think we need to look at this, we need to look at, you know, like I say, our housing prices are going through the roof, and if there's citizens, they don't get, you know, extra money for the house.
Right. And that's why I came up with that, you know, like I said, I looked at the last five years, and values have gone up forty percent, and so that's just how I came up with this, but we could certainly come up with a range for you all to choose from, range of options.
That would be awesome.
You mean like ten, twenty, thirty, something like that, is that what you're thinking? Just to see what the numbers would be?
I'd like to see.
Even look at maybe, like, if you get free, why can't you just freeze the...
I wish that we could freeze it.
I don't know if we want to freeze it, let's, let's look at it.
Let's look at it and see what our options are.
And then I, and I like that we can go back next year and readdress if we want to.
Readdress it again, yeah.
Yeah, it's not forever.
Something to consider on a freeze, or it's a tax ceiling technically, is that, you know, and the, the school district does it because the over sixty-five folks no longer have kiddos. But something that you would want to consider is, this, this actually gives you more control, you can change it as the need arises, or as values go up. And then the other thing is, this would give more immediate relief, because if you did a tax ceiling, this 2022 tax year would be the base year. If you did, if you increased the exemption, it'll take effect this, their bills that they get in October.
Okay.
So it's more immediate.
Go ahead, Mayor.
And also, I've lived long enough to see the cycles, and you know, if we were to freeze it, the actual property values could go down, and now you're frozen at a higher property value. So I think the dollar amount way to go is better than freezing.
Just look at it every year, probably be the best way.
Makes a lot of sense. All right, any other questions, Council? I think Kim's got some actions, and we'll come back, and we'll discuss it at a future meeting, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kim.
Any other budget questions, concerns, tax stuff for Kim, before we let her go?
This next slide is just to reiterate Gabe's comments.
Yeah, so Mayor, we provided, Council, we provided some information to you about employee salaries, so if you have any questions about that, happy to answer that. Just to, to remind you of what we see as being the overall priorities going into this budget year, we're in an unprecedented hiring environment. That's not just our city, that's every city, every major employer. We're all in competition for good qualified people. So we've penciled in, for planning purposes, a five percent across the board adjustment for employees. We had a preliminary meeting with our health insurance provider, broker. They advised that we, through our brokers, seek to negotiate a one-year extension with our current provider, Cigna, instead of going into the open market for bids, which trust their judgment, and they've delivered a tremendous amount of value, so that's what we're dealing with. We do anticipate double-digit increases in, in health insurance, and, you know, anything that is passed down to employees, if there's not a commensurate adjustment in salaries, is a, is a net pay cut, so I want you to be mindful of that. We'll have more information in the future. Got some general questions, and I'm happy to answer them if you have them about our interns and our management analysts, so really excited with the response for our apprentice program. So we have fifty-plus, or almost sixty, applications. Those are folks that are high school students, college students, we want to get them into the city, and I hope that they become the future kind of pool that we draw from, for future employees. So our graduate intern program, as you're aware, has been very successful. We've been able to plug in management analysts in various departments. I think the volume user is probably Mr. Larry Little. I think about every, about every intern or management analyst with a pulse helps out with the rental inspection program, but there's any questions you have by that program, happy to answer those, and again, we're excited. Believe we're going to hire Melanie, or the next maybe month, to get our summer folks. We have a few returners, one in the police department, one, I think, in library, so we're excited to get those people plugged in.
You mentioned the, back to the health insurance, when will we get those numbers?
The energy first of July.
Oh, not till then, okay.
And that's for the next year, or the current?
October.
Yeah, be, be an October one start, and again, the, is, current train of thought is to request a third year with Cigna, instead of doing an open bid and... is to request a third year with Cigna, instead of doing an open bid and roll the dice.
So that third year with Cigna, is that going to increase, or you don't know?
Yeah, we're, we're confident there'll be an increase of some magnitude.
Yeah, it's your guarantee, and so this would be a third year in the regular program level.
Yep, and so each year, we, we can look at plan modifications and changes, uh, we had, um, in the past year, a more favorable claims history, uh, which helps our cause, and, uh, some of the rationale to try to stay with Cigna for at least another year, and then we'll go out more likely to the open market.
And did we have a number on this, um, cost of living, living adjustment, did we have a percent, or?
Five, five percent is what we're.
And when are we looking to have that payout, or that?
It'd be effective with the new budget year, October one. So I've shared some information, as I've found it in our region, uh, with you, Decatur, Texas, the city council just approved a five percent across the board, um, Weatherford, I believe, did ten percent across the board for employees and hire for, um, manager.
Can we, can we compare with cities that are, are tax rate and base and medium average, all that the same, because that's a big difference, like Decatur and Lake Worth both, if I remember correctly, um, they had more business and sales tax than they do citizens, and so their tax rate, I mean, their tax value is going to be higher, they're going to have more money to play with, and we have, we don't have that much, I mean, we do have good sales tax and all that, but, um, there's all that figured in together, we got to be comparable with other cities. I'm not saying our employees don't deserve it at all, don't get me wrong.
Sure.
It's just that I feel like we need to really study that, and I did a study on it, and I know you got upset, but.
No, I didn't, hey, I'm a fact-based person, the honest reality is, our competitors for employees, municipal employees, are whatever ups and determines to be a reasonable commute from where they live.
That's true.
So to say we compare with Lake Worth or White Settlement, it doesn't really matter. What does matter is that we're competitive within the region and whatever a tolerable commute is. Now that being said, and to your point, it's well received, the revenue structure of each city is different. We're in a phase of growth in Saginaw, where we have, uh, two things, growing capacity in revenues, but with more people to serve, we have growing needs, so, um, the thought behind taking in care of employees and health insurance first before adding positions is, we've proven with multiple vacancies, it's very difficult to find new people, so my recommendation to you is, let's stick with the people we have first, make sure we're competitive in the market, and then as we do, um, in mid-year, look at add positions. Now, some of the fun and exciting things that we have coming, of which there are many, restaurants and, uh, new retail opportunities, that, uh, will provide sales tax, will help out in our CCPT fund, police officers, uh, streets projects, that sort of thing, so, um, I think you're going to see across the region, and Lee and I went to a regional city management, um, luncheon a few weeks ago, this is common, this is, you know, all of you who are working, I'm confident, I've had some talks with the, with Nikki, it's just a tough hiring environment, um, it, it's going to remain that way, so, but thankfully, we, we have the capacity, uh, we've planned for it well in the past few years, and, um...
I understand that, I think my biggest concern, or one of my biggest concerns is, we're hiring all these extra people, but we need police officers, but we don't have the money to fund the police officers. Do we need a fireman, two firemen, one?
We have a slash and a brush.
Okay, so, and then we don't have the money to do that. I think that's one of my biggest concerns, is because we hire fifteen or twenty people, and we could hire, we could hire a couple of police officers and a fireman for what that pays for that fifteen or twenty people. Do we have to have those fifteen or twenty people right now? I mean, I know it's a, a program that you're, you're, and I understand it, I get it, but I don't, what I don't get is that we don't have our needs first, and then we have all these extra people running around, does that make sense?
I don't think that's completely accurate, Valerie, we, we haven't hired police officers because we couldn't find them. We've been trying to find them, we would have hired them, we can afford it.
But he made the remark that we couldn't afford it, we didn't have the time.
That's, that's not true at all, that's absolutely not true.
Yeah, so.
We can afford them, we just can't find police officers now, we would love to hire, what, three or four, however many you got now, we can't find people.
Yeah, I'm four short right now, that, that are approved in budget, but I can't find personnel to fill those positions.
They are approved in the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I, and I think, if I contribute to confusion, I apologize, but, you know, it's not a, it's not a zero-sum game, so when we fill a vacancy in one department, it's not at somebody else's expense.
Right.
It's, the vacancies exist within the departments generally. Now sometimes when we have retirements, uh, we'll change the, the, uh, name of the position, so I, I shared this with the council when, uh, Dana Johnson retired, longtime Public Works employee, um, she's probably watching, if I had to guess, I'm just kidding. We changed her position, which I think was administrative coordinator or something, to be a management analyst, which now I think is, uh, John Cervantes in, in Public Works, but, um...
So do they, do they do the same job? Because an analyst usually just, you know, researches and tells you how to way to increase or decrease whatever.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the scope has changed a little bit, based on the skill of the person, so, you know, I think, um, some of our management analysts now and our interns are working, my opinion is they need to work, uh, where needed, so, John, off the top of my head, is looking at, um, work orders, entering work orders, um, electronically, so that's something I think when, uh, hard to believe that we'll be, uh, technologically advanced with a Sooner fan becoming your next, uh, director of Public Works, uh, but anyway, no, there's always special projects, um...
They have fee structures.
At fee structures, we're having the, the analysts look at the various user fees in different departments, so, uh, and then as I mentioned, Larry, um, you know, he's got some of the interns management analysts working with the rental program, uh, gosh, I can't even think, they, uh, they all do tour of duty with Larry, so, um, yeah.
I have one more question about the, um, the, the cost of living adjustment, so if we find out, so we, we looking at a five percent raise for every employee, do we have a dollar amount on that, or what that is, yearly? And then, the next part is, so if the health insurance increases, are we going to look at more? Or is that five percent going to kind of help offset that increase that we don't really know about yet? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's a good question, so consistently said, we need to address the market with across-the-board increases, which is in keeping with our competitors in our region, say forty-five-minute drive of Saginaw. What's unknown is the health insurance increase. If it was, and I'm just throwing this out there, if this equated to say two percent of someone's salary, and we pass it through fully to the employee, then that eats in to the salary increase, right?
Seven percent, yeah.
So I can't tell you, other than I want to make you aware of this dynamic, what we will end up recommending, but I'm just bringing this to your attention, as we always do, we, we outline the big issues early on, it's something we're going to have to deal with, um, and we may have to look at plan changes and increase, you know, changes to fit our budget, ultimately, we have a budget we can live with, uh, the last thing I'd mention, in past years, um, we have followed the, um, posting and notification guideline for the de minimis tax rate, this would give the city council the most flexibility, uh, in terms of a tax rate, so you could go, you know, it would give us the most capacity, like last year, we didn't end up using the de minimis tax rate, uh, there's a accelerated schedule, so some of these decisions, we would need your feedback early on, um, but for right now, and the sake of discussion, you know, I think it's, it's good to talk about this, kind of understand, we'll come back to the points we heard about the exemptions and bring you more information, so.
And we'll have, we'll have better cost decimates as we work through the numbers for salary adjustments and health insurance changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Yeah, I had one thing, going back to the resources and us having, needing resources, and I think, I could be wrong, I think one of the things is, is the income program and understanding, so I know in the private sector, we big time need, um, income programs, we bring in engineers, uh, that's usually seniors or seniors in college, engineering bachelor, and starting out, you all sign very small projects, it, it's really at that point, it, it's not beneficial from an economical standpoint to the company, but the reason we're doing that is so that we can evaluate these, uh, potential, uh, and future employees, and make sure that they're a good fit, and also too, it gets us time to bring them in, you know, they're in college or getting debt, and it gives us a better footing when we offer them a position that they're good to actually get them in, it's another way to get actual resources in and become workers, and so that's kind of, I'm assuming that's the same way we're doing our interns here.
Yeah, we have kind of two intern-type programs, so we have, uh, graduate interns who are generally have been public administration students, the, um, and we've done, we've budgeted a couple each year, so part of the program is, um, when these folks come in, I ask them to, um, find their replacement, so I think that that is part of your job, any job, before you leave, is to make sure that, you know, the cupboard's not bare, so, uh, give an example, a long time ago, in a day and age when men had shorter hair, Pedro was an intern, we didn't have a full-time position at the time, so he went to work in, in Justin, uh, in development services, uh, went to Scotland, did the Braveheart hair, and we had the opportunity to come back, so, um, I think our interns, we haven't been able to keep all of them full-time, but the goal is where there are needs, is to plug them in to full-time, uh, positions, so developing the pipeline is really, really important. Now that's for our graduate interns, our summer interns, which this is not reinventing the wheel, I think, uh, Fame and Fortune, one of our most famous summer interns, Mr. Glenn Reeves, is now a twenty-year employee, started off his summer help, and so that's what we're doing with our apprentice program, we're getting, yeah, generally younger students, high school students, you know, maybe first, second-year college students in the door, we hope that they have a positive experience, and I hope at some point in the future, they would consider coming back and working for the city. I've told you all this before, but, you know, our, our secret sauce, or our, our superpower with, uh, with finding employees, I think it happens to be people that have some sort of a personal tie or local tie, they went to Boswell, hopefully they're not Sooners fans, um, you know, they were raised in Saginaw, what have you, so a lot of people that are employees fit that bill, um, but anyway, I, you know, I personally, I could go on and on about our interns, I'm a big supporter of our young people and our students, and, and I think, uh, we've had really good luck with people we've hired.
Thank you. Cindy, you have a question?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, back to a point that Valerie made earlier, um, I know the information you provided to us is like you want to give a five percent cost of living raise, um, I know that Valerie had provided some information with cities that were similar to ours, some were local, some not so local, uh, but I found her chart quite informative, and it made it a lot easier to make a decision whether it would be five percent, or three percent, or ten percent, because she had compared so many aspects from one city to the next, population, how much money was brought in through sales tax, what was the, uh, average household income, what was the average, um, you know, house and property value, what was their tax rate for that year, uh, those types of things would be interesting, rather than just saying, hey, Decatur's given a five percent, that's what I want to do. I'd like to see a lot more detail explaining that, and include in that as well, the comparison of the benefit packages, because I understand that Saginaw has a really good benefit package, um, I know it's a lot better than any place I've ever worked.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see that information before we make a decision on five percent.
Sure, and maybe you can share that information with me, I don't recall that detail, I'm not a benefits expert, um, we, we rely on recommendations from people with good information, so, uh, we...
Can't you collect that information?
Oh, I was requesting the mayor pro temp, maybe we could share that.
Yeah, but hers was for twenty.
You did salaries, okay, that'd be great. On the benefit side, uh, we, we have a benefit broker working for us, uh, from a large corporation hub, so I think it'd be best to get a comparison from them.
Okay.
From other cities.
I mean, just provide, I don't care where you get it.
Yeah, hey.
Just provide the information to us, because the more information we have, the better decision, we may be able to give more than five percent.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
And...
But then, you know, we may not.
Sure, sure, and again, to the point, this is, this is not a Saginaw problem, this is a regional, uh, and national.
Understand.
All employers are...
All I'm asking is just to provide us more data than just say, hey, Decatur's asked, is given five percent, we'd like to do that too.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Can, and with that, can we see difference, so like three percent, five percent, seven percent, ten percent?
Of course.
Can we see those options?
The overall project.
Just options?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, any other questions? We, we got a good start on budget, so this is just step one, we'll have many other discussions. Um, two things before we let us go, one, there's a election this Saturday, please vote, please vote, please, nobody votes, please vote, uh, May the seventh, is that this Saturday?
Yes.
May seventh, please vote, where do you vote, anybody remember? Is it?
The library and EMS.
Alright, excellent, library and EMS.
Janice, do you know how many's already voted in the early voting, have you checked it?
We just checked for all of them.
No, that's not bad, okay, but that's out of, we think, maybe ten thousand potential voters, so, sort of small, so, let's see how we can do it, so please, um, that's all I have. Rick, thank you, sir, love you, miss you, mean it.
I think Randy's crying harder than anybody else.
You know, I wasn't going to cry, but she'd make me cry.
There's Kleenexes writing.
Alright, alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I make a motion, we adjourn right now.
All those, raise your right hand, at seven twenty-seven, we're out of here, thank y'all.
Russell, Russell, I remember.